Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. Everybody is at the back end. I understand that Mrs. Spurs will be a little bit late. Please stand for the Pledgeable Agent.
The Pledgeable Agent stands to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council per stating their name and address. Council may take, may act on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Please, Mr. Pinker.
Good evening. First, I bring greetings from Mrs. Pinker. My wife takes care of the prayer intention board at the St. John Paul Two Chapel was awarded recognition last fall. And she changes those prayer intentions every weekend. And for your benefit, recently, she was contacted by a local gentleman who asked that a prayer intention be placed on that board. And it was on behalf of the common council. And the gentleman asked the people to go to the chapel to pray that the council has clear thinking and peace of mind as it deals with serious legal matters. I see that's again on the agenda. The nature of the chapel, you would have people praying for the council 24/7. The second item, my comments are going to focus on the five-five vote settled by the mayor's affirmative bribery that approved the $16.8 million allotment for the Marshfield Utilities Construction Project. Some observers might view the vote as a question of want versus need. Some might view the vote as a battle between two views of budgeting and spending. Others might view the decision-making as a rubber stamp that nearly ran out of ink. And another group might see the approval of millions of dollars as one that should have had a supermajority or a referendum. I believe it is important to remember that we have been here before. Ten years ago, we saw the city build a new fire department headquarters. It replaced one that was old, too small, inefficient, not suited for 21st century operation. Not that long ago, the city built a new library. The project was funded through a public-private donor concept, replaced a facility that was old, supposedly too small, inefficient, and not suited to 21st century. The utilities project will replace a facility that is, again, old, too small, inefficient, and not suited to the operations of a dynamic, progressive public utility working in the 21st century. Aside from committing to $16.8 million by a simple majority, what else happened at that meeting? From an outside-of-the-box perspective, I may be far outside of the box, I suggest you have told the police department, an entirely new building is down the road. It will replace, as we have done in the past, one that is old, too small, inefficient, and not suited to operations in the 21st century. Again, considering the out-of-the-box perspective, assuming the police department will remain downtown, a new facility could be part of a dynamic, forward-thinking, public-private partnership that could anchor the west half of the Second Street corridor, as well as provide a gateway structure, begin urban renewal, provide promotion and recognition of the downtown and near downtown through a project that has innovative designs enhancing those areas. It could also spur economic restructuring and address at least nine action items in the downtown master plan. Now, as I noted, I've obviously gone far outside of the box, but I think the question remains, and Alderman Wagner, who keeps track of such things, can probably tell you how many times various people have asked the question, who else wants to go outside of the box? And if we don't go outside of the box, what happens to the downtown, the near downtown, and the Second Street corridor?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Item D is our motion to approve the minutes of the January 12, 2021 meeting. Motion by Mr. Hemler, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. She can't connect.
Yes, signal.
A motion carries nine to zero. Can Mrs. Spurs back in now? All right, item E, staff updates. Any staff updates, Steve?
None that I'm aware of, Mayor.
All right, item F, mayor's comments. I have none. Item G, council comments. Any council comments? Please, Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, I had the honor of meeting some very special individuals here in Marshfield. The name is Secret Snow Shoveler Society. I know they've gotten a little media attention on Focus. I think they've been on television. But talking to these people personally, I was just overwhelmed by their generosity to help people here in the city of Marshfield that don't have the ability or cannot afford to shovel their sidewalks and driveways. They can be found on Facebook if anyone's interested in contacting them about having their driveways shoveled, or they can be reached at 897-0776. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? All right, item H, any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Please, Mr. Pinker.
This is an update from a committee that most people probably doesn't even, don't even know exists. We all know that part of Marshfield lies within Marathon County. And we also have a rather extensive boundary with Marathon County. And as a result, some activities that occur there, especially in an emergency context, may affect the city of Marshfield. Beginning on March 11th, the Marathon County Local Emergency Planning Committee, I have been a member for ten years, and Alderman Rachel is the alternate member from Marshfield. And prior to that, Deputy Chief Roy Dolan is from the Fire Department, the alternate member. On March 11th, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the LEPC, will start an update of the Marathon County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's a plan which could potentially have some implications in the town of Spencer, Mannville area, or along the town of McMillan border with Marshfield. And the plan sets out concepts and strategies for mitigating natural hazards. And Darrell Landau, who has assisted the city on a number of occasions with planning, is going to plan for that job. And if things, anything major comes up, either Nick or I will keep you informed.
Thank you. Any other reports from commissions, boards, or committees? All right, seeing none, we'll go to item I. Is there a motion to receive and place in file approving all actions in the consent agenda motion by Mr. Hemler, or second by Mr. Butky? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. A motion carries nine to zero. Item K, introduction of the new MEW representative, an update on the Street Division Safety Audit introduced by January Q Human Resources Director, presented by Sean Wall.
Thank you. So as you are aware, we have been contracting with MEW 2019 for our safety services. Up until mid-2020, we had Steve Isaacson as our local representative. IMEW has since replaced him upon Steve's retirement. And Sean Wall is here. He is our new consultant, and he's going to just introduce himself and provide you with an update of what they offer and give you a brief update on the Street Vision Safety Audit that he helped us with several months back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Wall. Thank you, Ken, for the introduction there. Coming to the city of Marshfield, kind of hoping to get the city of Marshfield into my region. I also take care of Marshall Utilities. Been doing this, this portion of my career for about six years now. Been in safety for roughly 20. So the six years in the utility business with MEW, lots of different opportunities. We've had to service a lot of different communities. So looking forward to getting in the city. Actually had a pretty aggressive day, learning a lot of new employees and meeting all the departments today, which was great. Looking forward to getting in here and continuing the training that Steve Isaacson did before me, as well as safety program work, and just being that safety resource for the city. Again, been here for about six years, looking forward to kind of bringing the utility and the city together a little bit more from that safety perspective, kind of working together. We're all kind of under the same umbrella, so it's really just kind of unifying that from a safety perspective. Last October, again, Steve retired in April, around April last year. Last October, the Streets Department was contacted by the DSPS, as the Department of Safety and Professional Services, think basically your statewide OSHA. They were contacted by them to do an audit of the facility and the department. So I came in. Thankfully, the DSPS gave us a solid week and a half notice, which is amazing. They, generally speaking, only have to give about 24 hours. So it was really nice that they were able to do that, allowed me some time to come in. Came in two Fridays, I believe it was, the Friday when we found out, and the Friday before the audit as well, just to kind of walk through the Streets Department, making sure everything was taken care of. Steve did a really good job over there. There's a lot of things that were already in place, made it super easy for me coming in. The auditor was here for roughly, it was just about an hour, which we're finding is somewhat on the average. The only thing they found was a few brine tanks that were, weren't necessarily labeled as confined spaces, which through discussions, we agreed, okay, this is fine. Chris Holly actually got on that immediately, had it solved and taken care of literally within a day, contacted the ESPS auditor, let her know that we had some follow-ups, which she was just very, very pleased about. She's not used to getting such a quick turnaround from departments and places like that. So overall, if that's all the auditor can find, we were very, very happy with the results. Things were looking very good at the Streets Department. And going through the city today, say, we're in good shape. We're in very good shape safety-wise. Had a little bit of a gap there last year, just with, again, with Steve's retirement and getting replacements and having interviews for positions like ours through a pandemic is not necessary. is not necessarily the easiest thing to do. So, we were able to pull through, and we have things in place now and really ready to move forward. So, looking forward to getting back in. I'll be here, generally speaking, about once a week, same way as Steve was, meeting the needs of the city of Marshfield for the safety program.
Great. Any questions from council? Seeing none? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Item L, second reading of ordinance number 1448 to amend. Chapter 18, General Zoning Ordinance, Section 18-658, Section 18-659, Section 18-72, and Section 18-73, presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So, staff presented some options and received feedback from the Plan Commission regarding how to improve the regulations for accessory structures. And accessory structures are essentially garages and sheds. So, over the past few years, there's been a number, a fair number of exceptions that have been granted to these requirements through a conditional use permit. And anytime that there's, you know, kind of a lot of exceptions to a regulation, we try to look and see how we can improve that. So, I presented the proposed changes at the first reading, and so I won't really go over them. However, they are included in the staff report, and I can answer any questions. One of the, so ultimately, one of the main changes is increasing the allowable square footage that is allowed for property owners who wish to build an accessory structure on their property. So, if they have a larger house and enough land, they can build a larger structure than they are currently able to. So, that's essentially the main change that's being made. This is the second reading, and the recommendation is to approve ordinance 1448.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1448? A motion by Mr. Wagner, or second by Mr. Bargender? Discussion, please. Mr. Witzel.
Thank you. In Section 8A, I noticed that you've reduced it from three to two structures. Is there a reasoning for that?
So, I think that after staff kind of talked about it a little bit, we thought that, and also, the structures, if it's an attached garage, it's not included in that count. So, you can have attached garage plus two detached structures. So, you essentially could have three if it's attached. You just can only have two detached. So, that's, that's kind of, we thought that a lot of times when, when we go to look at the garages, we don't really think that adding on to the house is quite the same. It doesn't quite take up the same footprint as a detached, because you still have to meet the setbacks with the detached structure. So, that's kind of the thought process.
But in 8D, it still talks about total of all detached and attached accessory structures. So, can you explain a little bit further about why you maintain attached and detached in that section when you're removing detached garages from the other section?
So, it's, so the attached garages just won't count for the, the count of how many garages you can have. However, the total accessory space is still, you take the attached and the detached, and that takes up the, and that accounts for the total space. So, the, the only time that we don't count attached garage is just for the, the count of how many accessory structures are on. So, essentially, this, the two residential accessory structures are just when it's detached. However, we still take the square footage of the accessory when we count the total allowable space.
Okay, so you've decreased the number of buildings, but you've, you said increased the amount of footage?
I guess you could say that, yeah.
Okay. And what happens to all of those individuals that currently have three detached structures? Are just grandfathered in?
They would be grandfathered in, correct.
Okay. And if they ever had to do anything with one of those buildings, such as repair, rebuild, they would then have to get it? Yeah, Josh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they could replace as existing. They'd have to meet the, they'd be responsible to determine the footprint and the location. I think if, we'd have to look at that, though, but I believe they'd be able to replace an existing structure as-is.
Without having to get a conditional use permit, even if it's a third structure?
And that's, I guess we haven't probably debated that, that particular question, but I think that would be how it would work.
Okay. And one further question. Does this also affect, because I didn't see anything right off here about non-utility-type structures, warehouses, those types of things that might be in a property? Are those exempt, or?
Yeah, so there's, there's different accessory structures listed after this in the accessory land use of Section 1865. So, like, yeah, recreational, like playgrounds and such, that's a different land use. The other thing I just want to kind of mention is, for our upcoming zoning code rewrite, we're also proposing to allow for property owners to have one yard shed up to 100 square feet that wouldn't count towards, towards this. But that's not a change that we included this time, but in a couple of months, we'll probably be including that too. So, if you have a shed that's under 100 square feet, it won't apply to this, is what we're going to propose in the future. So, we're going to hopefully try to cover. There's not too many people that have three detached accessory structures and still meet the size and setback requirements. So, we're hoping that that kind of covers those, those other instances.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero. Thank you. Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1449 to amend the city of Marshfield municipal code to add Sections 18-116, building relocation, presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So, regulations on moving structures within the city limits was recently located in Chapter 15, which is the building code. After some discussion with various staff members, we decided that it's probably better suited to be in the zoning code rather than the building code, hence the move. There are some minor changes that were made to the proposed regulations, but overall, the majority of the regulations are just being, simply being transferred from Chapter 15 to Chapter 18. So, I'll just kind of briefly go discuss what requires a moving permit. So, anytime a building is moving from one location to another location, when either the origin and/or the destination is within city limits, the following will be required: a moving permit, common council approval in a public hearing, a building inspection, and a site plan review. Now, there are several exceptions that are listed in the, in the staff report and, sorry, there are several exceptions listed for when a moving permit or common council approval is not required. So, I'll kind of go over some of the most common ones. So, manufactured and mobile homes, when they're relocated within the same mobile home park and/or mobile home subdivision, new certified modular manufactured homes, pre-manufactured sheds and small garages that are 14 feet wide or less. And then I have some more exceptions that are listed in the staff report, but those are less common. So, with that, this was reviewed by the Plan Commission at the January meeting. They recommended approval. This is the first reading, thus there is no requested action at this time. Final action is expected to take place at the February 9th meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Bryce. We'll go on to item N, request to approve Resolution Number 2021-05, extending the emergency authorization provided by Resolution Number 2020-55 until April 13th, 2021, or such date and time as the common council may hereafter determine the end of the state of emergency. Presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall back in November, I came to the council looking for authority to regulate, by which I mean, you know, further restrict or even prohibit access by the public to our buildings and facilities due to the growing number of cases of COVID-19. In fact, November was one of the high peak months for the number of cases that we experienced in this state. At that time, the council was supportive, and Resolution 2020-55 was approved for a period of roughly 60 days. Subsequently, we did basically close access for the public to City Hall. We do allow people to come into the lobby area, and if they have an appointment, they can meet with a staff person. Otherwise, they can pick up the phone and call and try and get their questions answered that way. But we're trying desperately to protect the health and safety of our staff, who we've seen in a number of quarantines with, and also the public. And the library is taking action, and maybe others have to some degree as well. The number of cases in Wisconsin has fallen a little bit lately, but we're still in the midst of the pandemic. January 12th passed, and I apologize, I should have had this resolution before you two weeks ago, brought to my attention by one of my department heads, that I failed to do so. So, we need to see if we have your support to continue to allow me to have the authorization to restrict and control the city buildings and facilities and working with our staff to protect health and safety. We hope that we're not far off from perhaps being able to relax things with the vaccine, you know, coming out now and some of the cases dropping, but we're not there yet, certainly. I want to apologize to the council. I put April 13th on the agenda, and then subsequently, I did some checking and found out that the governor's mask mandate has been extended until March 20th. So, what I put in the resolution in your packet is that I'm asking for authority to have this extend to March 23rd, the night that the council meets for the second meeting in that month. And somehow, I didn't get the, the agenda changed. So, I'm really looking for continuing just the authority that I have right now from you, and I appreciate that, to regulate the access to the buildings, to the public, as we continue working our way through COVID-19, but through March 23rd, 2021. So, with that, I would request your approval of Resolution Number 2021-05.
All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-05? A motion by Mr. Butky, second by Mr. Rosendich. Any discussion? Mr. Wagner.
Is it, is it clear that we have to make an amendment to this to March 23rd? Or is it that way in the, or is it the resolution at the desk, does it already have March 23rd?
We will make sure it says March 23rd before the mayor signs it.
Yeah, I looked at the packet before I came on tonight, and the, the packet document does have March 23rd. Like I said, I really apologize for not having the agenda cover sheet corrected.
All right, Mrs. Spurres.
Thank you. Steve, I just have a question. Have you heard much from, and people in the public about the building being closed? Have you gotten many complaints or anything like that?
That's a really good question, Rebecca. We really haven't gotten much, and I really expected to get citizen concerns and complaints when we were doing the tax collection without allowing in-person payment. You know, we did a good job, I think, at staff level. Tom Lux did an excellent job of publicizing it, that we had various payment options without paying in person. But still, so many people are used to dealing directly with our staff at that time of year that I was surprised not to hear more questions and concerns. I have not really heard a lot, and I have not heard a lot from our staff that we're getting complaints. There's still people, I'll be honest with you, that want to meet face-to-face. And we've had our staff members come out and talk to people in the lobby briefly. So, it's not like we've had no contact. But I think we've had a, had good success in at least reducing the amount of contact we've had with people.
Any further, Mr. Witzel?
Thank you. I would imagine, as you alluded to with the tax payments, that the traffic into City Hall would ebb and flow throughout the year. I would also further guess that this is a time when maybe it's not as busy, not really heavy summertime construction time when people are doing home projects. When do we see an uptick in the volume of traffic into the City Hall?
You know, honestly, Deb Hall might be as good a person to respond to that, because I know you see more of the front activity. You know, we certainly are going to, into another election cycle with a primary in February and a spring election in April. Any thoughts on that, Deb?
Yes. So, our heaviest times for traffic are during licensing periods, during tax collection, and of course, elections. Being a year into this COVID, people really have adapted very well, and staff is very accommodating to those residents that do need some one-on-one contact. They make appointments, and we meet with them face-to-face. So, things have been working very well.
And if I can add to that, we really have made inroads, going along with what Deb said, into getting people to do business in other ways, online. You know, now we've got the new Evolve software coming onboard for the building inspection and permit. But we've seen citizens adapt in some pretty impressive ways. Now, there's always going to be people who want that face-to-face contact for anything that they do with us. But, you know, I think we've had a lot of cooperation from the general public.
And as a follow-up, do we anticipate that this continuation of this is going to have any kind of an effect on the upcoming election and people's need to get in for potentially absentee ballots or anything else?
Again, I'll turn to Deb on that one. I mean, the, the spring election, you know, Deb, I'm not sure how many people we have vote in typically, and I assume we'll be trying to use the council chambers again for absentee ballots.
Yes. If, if nothing comes out of COVID, I think people's awareness of our different processes during this past year with all the elections we had, people have come to know that we have the absentee ballot process in place. We had record numbers of people requesting absentee ballots. And for normal primary in February, we're lucky if we get 10 to 15% voter turnout, with like 300 of them being absentee voters. We already have close to 900 people that want absentee ballots. So, the process is out there. People understand it. We are still going to offer in-person absentee voting at City Hall. We just move it in here versus having them come into City Hall.
And adding again, I, I tend to be a positive person, kind of a glass half-full kind of guy. And I, I really hope that when I come back to you next time, if you don't step in with other ideas before that. But on March 23rd, I'm hopeful with the vaccine getting out there more and with the reduction we're seeing, although it could always go the other way, that perhaps rather than talking about further restrictions, we'll be able to start looking the other direction. But I, I would appreciate your support.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, are you, I mean, is the city looking at further protective glass? Any other alternatives so that when things do open up, that we still are protecting our staff?
Well, that's a great question, Adam. We, you know, have secured a number of the plexiglass barriers that have been used for elections, has been used for, you have them between you at the council chambers. We have them in the office area between staff members. And again, I want to say how grateful I am to the CARES program, because I think I've sent emails to you before, but we've gotten reimbursed for more than $300,000 worth of expenditures we've had to make during this pandemic. We can certainly look at acquiring more. The CARES program has been extended. If there's more opportunities to make use of plexiglass barriers and other sorts of, you know, barriers to keep the public away from the staff and vice versa for safety, we'll sure look at it.
Anything further? All right, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Mr. Hemler? And that motion carries nine to one. Thank you. Item O, adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are involved. Review amendment to offer to purchase for land located in District Number 7, and closed session under Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, update on employment law matters involving the police department. There is a motion to go into closed session by Mr. Pacheco, second by Mr. Butky. Please vote. And that motion carries ten to zero. Thank you. We are in closed session.
Seeing no discussion, please vote. My motion carries ten to zero. Item R, any suggested items for future agendas? Mr. Woodson.
Thank you, I have two items. First of all, I'd like to see if we can have our ordinance officers come in and address the ongoing overpopulation of stray and feral cats,